Thank you, everybody. Uh, next up is public comment. Does anyone wish to comment on anything not on tonight's agenda? Seeing no one, I will move on. Discussion items, we don't have a student representative as of yet, and Mr. Catino is not here, but any member of the school committee have anything they want to bring up?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Gmanoni.
We have a long list of retirements this evening, and they're usually down at the bottom of our list, and I just want to wish all of them the best in their future endeavors. Um, I think it's, uh, I want to thank them for giving their service all these years to Middleborough. Um, I see some, some serious names that I remember, and my kids are in high school at this point, and, uh, hopefully we might see some of them around as, as substitutes here and there, which wouldn't be bad.
Through you, Mr. Chair. There's only fourteen retirees, some of whom have been in the district for a good deal of time, spent nearly their entire career here. Um, you go down the list, you'll see some names, obviously, that you'll notice. Uh, we also have twelve new hires on the books already, which is great, all signed with contracts, uh, meeting with a couple more, one tomorrow and one next week. So we'll get those folks and even those numbers out a little bit. Couple of resignations there listed, um, but a good deal of personnel movement at this time of year. Um, and it is, regretfully, these folks are retiring because a lot of them have retired with a great deal of experience, knowledge, uh, but hopefully we're replacing them with some strong young individuals who want to come in and, uh, build a career of their own. So, thank you for mentioning that, Brian. I was going to mention that in my report a little bit later, but, uh, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Rowe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I got to participate in first grade fun day.
Was it fun?
Two weeks ago, it was fun.
There you go.
I got to be at the water station and dump water on a bunch of first graders' heads. Um, but one thing that did happen, they had a scheduled fire drill during the middle of it, and I was very impressed with the, um, with the MKGs first grade teachers, the way they got them all organized and quiet. But one thing I was very impressed with, be it's having, working in my district and going through own fire drills at the high school level, um, the way that they took their time to make sure that every single kid and every single staff member was accounted for. That is something I have not witnessed in, you know, seventeen, eighteen years of education. So the fact that they took the time, even in a drill, to make sure where every single student and every single adult was, was pretty impressive.
Fantastic.
Mr. Chair, I think that exemplifies the partnership that we have with the Middleborough Fire Department and all of our first responders in the community, that, uh, we make a point of making sure that that's done with every fire drill and every other drill, emergency drill or otherwise. Thank you.
Mr. Oakley?
This is something I actually completely forgot to bring up at the last meeting, but, um, thanks to all of you, I had the opportunity to go to the high school graduation, and, uh, I thought it was such an amazing experience. Uh, it was a little daunting actually handing people, uh, their, their diplomas as if, as if I in some way had taught them, but, um, you could just feel the energy in that room and the excitement and the potential, and I just thought it was a really awesome thing. It's been a little while, um, probably for all of us since our high school graduation, but, um, it was, uh, exciting to be there, and it makes me realize why this stuff that we do is so important, so that we can continue making that happen. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing no one, uh, next on our agenda is superintendent reports, so I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Lynch.
Chair, members of the committee, members of the audience, certainly welcome this evening. Uh, tonight we have, uh, some special guests with us that have started something that has been a dream of Mr. Paul Brandigan at the high school for a good number of years, since he started the principalship and actually before that. Uh, but to begin a, a Satchem Pride or Satchem Alumni Foundation, this one happens to be called the Satchem Pride Alumni Foundation, and I would welcome down to the podium, Mr. Patrick Brady. If you'd like to come up and sit down, please, Pat, and introduce the folks you brought with you, if you'd like, and talk a little bit of the new Satchem Pride Alumni Foundation and, and its purpose and how it will function, and looking forward to hearing that.
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to invite Brendan Cahoon, class of two thousand two, and Catherine Shields, class of two thousand nine, to join.
And I didn't mention that Patrick Brady is the class of two thousand five, so, sorry about that, Patrick.
Thank you for coming.
All right. So I guess a little, uh, background, um, board was founded September of twenty seventeen, uh, after, you know, a couple of years of, of trying to, you know, put the pieces together. Um, it was a group of eight of us at the moment, all Middleborough High School alum, uh, ranging class from, I think we have at the moment nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand and nine. Um, we're certainly looking to expand that, and I think the, the more, uh, traction we get, both on social media and with our, uh, event schedule, uh, the larger that grows. We've had, uh, conversations with Mr. Lynch, our Superintendent Lynch, um, about expanding to, uh, you know, the, the Memorial High School from, uh, the, the sixties and seventies generation, and certainly, uh, have contacts through, through Mr. Brandigan, uh, for the, uh, recent graduation classes and, um, you know, I've, uh, provided everyone with a copy of our mission statement and what we're looking to accomplish, and, you know, we're happy to read it into the record if, uh, if the board would like me to.
Sure.
You know, the, the Satchem Pride Foundation is dedicated to the promotion of Middleborough High School, its students, and the preservation of its tradition of excellence in education and co-curricular opportunities. Foundation seeks to connect current Middleborough High School students with alumni of Middleborough High School and Middleborough Memorial High School, along with community members, to help promote vitality and growth within the student body. The foundation believes that an active alumni, an active local alumni association will help current students reach their maximum potential in scholarship, fellowship, and leadership. The purpose of the foundation is exclusively educational and charitable. Uh, we are registered five oh one C three, and, uh, we are looking to provide students with funding to support academic and co-curricular activities, connect students with alumni and community network to help them develop their maximum potential, and provide learning experiences and resources for students to complement their educational experience, to promote intellectual and personal growth, and to foster a spirit of community at Middleborough High School. We were active participants in, I believe, what Mr. Brandigan calls the Twenty-First Century Learning Conference, and I believe the majority of the board, uh, hosted workshops that day. We're looking to, um, you know, continue that each year. Uh, we're also looking to, uh, create some, uh, some sort of event where it's almost like a, a job fair, or like a pre-networking, networking event for, you know, rising juniors and seniors and start to, you know, uh, you know, get them into that quasi-professional setting and, and meeting folks and, and interacting and communicating. Um, our first event, our first official event, was the Alumni Bash at Baddis Field, and I'm sure you're familiar with, uh, the, the Baddis Bash that the, the high school, I believe the Student Council puts on each year, so it was kind of like a, a mirror image, blast from the past, you know, nostalgia meets, uh, charitable event, uh, which was a great success and is the reason we're here tonight. Um, guys, anything to add?
Thanks, Pat. Um, I think, uh, we're, we're after fostering network, um, about giving back, about, um, you know, providing education and opportunities to current students and then future students. We don't necessarily have a specific direction in terms of, you know, uh, we want to support athletics, or academics, or music, or arts, et cetera. We really want to be able to provide opportunities to a number of different places, um, and really, really with what, hearing what the school needs. Um, so, also, in front of you guys today is, uh, one of our first efforts that we want to partake with the money that we've raised so far. We're really looking to donate money through the, through MHS, um, and open up really different mini-funding opportunities, um, for different departments, different programs, um, things that we haven't really thought of, um, to apply for use and need for academics, cultural, really just to enrich, um, really just the student body. So, um, this is a first foray into it. It's something that we think we can expand upon in the future, um, expand on those funds, expand on the number of funds, expand past, um, MHS as well. Um, but, you know, I think really we're, we're, we're sort of attacking this with an eye towards the future and really not knowing what, what could become of it, but we, we certainly believe in the power of the network and, um, something that we all believe in for sure in terms of really giving back to where we all start, so.
And with that, we'd like to, you know, formally invite you all to join us at our second annual Alumni Bash at Baddis. It's September twenty-eighth, um, from five to eleven P.M., and there'll be food and drinks and lawn games and all sorts of fun things, um, at our second annual event.
That's awesome. Uh, thanks. And my assumption is that although called the Alumni Bash, it's not just for alumni, anyone from the community is more than welcome to attend and be a part of it.
Yes.
Excellent. Excellent. Excellent.
And last year, as I recall through you, Mr. Chair, there were, there was local brewers who were there, and then there's, there was some, some victual, some food licenses and some, some alcohol licenses and things such as that. It was a, it was a nice atmosphere. I was able to attend with a, a friend of mine who was a member of the class of nineteen seventy-eight, uh, who was down in town for a little bit, down from New Hampshire, and we were able to go. So it was a really fun event, and I know you want to expand on that even more for next year, and I know the positive word has spread, there's no doubt about it, so.
That's awesome. Mr. Gmanoni?
I think this is absolutely wonderful that, uh, that you guys have taken this on as alumni, as Satchems. Couple of items that I was, just as you were briefly saying, you were talking about the junior and senior networking. I've al, I've always wanted a freshman type of a networking piece where freshmen got exposed to careers. Cause one of the things, or even, even eighth grade, but when, when students get to that junior year, they kind of almost have a, they either have to have something, cause they've chosen so many classes, or if they wanted to at that point, almost they can't. I don't know if that's something, cause I used to do it at my school when I was much younger. Um, it was nice to have younger people come in and talk to students and just, you would tie into either a biology class or a, or calc, uh, or a, an algebra or a geometry class, and you'd come in and just briefly, five, six minutes, you know, nothing, just enough to talk about what some, I don't know if that's something that with Paul, working on this, it would be great to see alumni, um, and I ran into a pilot, alumni pilot who flies for Reliant Air, class of twenty-ten, I believe, um, from Bridgewater State at one point, we were at a open house there, and I was like saying, this is the type of thing that would be nice to see more. I just, just something food for thought for you guys, um, and if something that worked out, it would be great, cause I, I, other than the money side, which is awesome, it's another piece of it that you guys have that network going right now, especially if you get the, the, uh, the more recent grads in there, when they graduate from college and they're starting their career, how they could dovetail some of this in, which would allow some of those freshmen maybe even ask questions even further of saying, do I want to do that? Maybe I do, maybe I don't, so, just food for thought.
For sure, and I, I believe, um, Mr. Brandigan has some sort of career fair that he does each year, and we're, we're based, you know, uh, Mr. Brandigan says jump, and we say how high, we'd love to be involved in that. We, uh, certainly look to him for program guidance, but, uh, that, you know, that was just for, for example, the, the, the larger, I think, uh, the network becomes, you, you do tap many different industries than, than what we have already, so that's, you know, something we'd be more than happy to be a part of.
Mr. Rowe?
Just real quick, just taking, I'm just taking notes, um, I, I think the idea of tying it in, though, to the classroom setting is a real great idea, particularly at the early levels. You know, you just think back to like, uh, you know, take, talk, take your parent to work and have them talk about your career, right? And I think that's such a, a good opportunity as well, particularly at the, the early ages, right, when they're really in discovery of, why am I learning this right now?
The ninth grade years would be set for everybody. They have to take certain courses and have to take it, but when they come out of that ninth grade year, they, they may have a few options where to go. So it just was something that I, I think of as I have a ninth grader and I have a senior now. Um, my, my senior has a direction, which is great. My ninth grader has somewhat of a direction, which is good, but what about the other, the other one? I don't know how the other students are. Uh, and that ninth grade, I don't know, I had a direction.
Mr. Oakley?
It's something awesome that you guys are doing, and, uh, I think just the power of connecting people in this way sounds like it could have a huge impact. So I was kind of curious, um, you mentioned the social media network, kind of expanding that. It feels like there'd probably be a ton of power in, in kind of trying to lasso that network and, uh, encouraging that, um, you know, graduates feeding back advice into the, uh, you know, to the existing or recent grads. I wonder if you guys had any plans to build out any sort of kind of formal website or formal like social media, um, setting to encourage that?
Sure. We, uh, engage the services of Shotgun Flat, which is a company in town with a, a bunch of Middleborough alumni, um, and we're, you know, going back and forth on, on content at the moment, the, the draft is done, but we're, we're hoping to launch, you know, at some point over the next, you know, three, four months.
That's excellent. Is that Mr. McKenna?
That's right.
Mike McKenna?
Yeah.
That's great.
And just in terms of networking, I think we're also, though, trying to be a bit pragmatic in terms of making sure we can walk before we're really running, and I think that might be our, has been our one hesitation with really expanding, like with a LinkedIn group, right? Or really, we have a Facebook landing page, we've had that, but really expanding upon that, we leverage it for announcements, but I think we also want to have our ducks in a row, right? Have this formal connection set up, really be able to dialogue with what we plan to do with funds raised or, or the programs that we're actually are going to be able to benefit this network from. Um, it, it has just been something just to share with the board that we've been thinking about in terms of not going too soon when, when we're not ready, and we want, we want this to succeed, right, for the long term.
Can, can you tell us what that Facebook page is, so that if people want to link up to you guys, they can at least do that to start with?
If you log on and search Satchem Pride Alumni Foundation, it should be the only result that comes up. I believe there is a direct link, I don't, uh, have it in front of me, but I'm happy to follow up and share with Superintendent Lynch.
Yeah. Great. Thank you. You had a question?
That was my question.
Okay, great. And Mr. Rowe?
Thank you, guys, for doing this. This is, um, really an amazing thing that you've done. It says here in this letter that you have seven thousand five hundred dollars that you relate to reward, and that's an amazing amount of money that you can do a lot of things with. And to do this, um, would this come from Mr. Brandigan, or would any teacher, coach, advisor, say the music department won something? Um, they could possibly just write you guys at this Satchem Pride Alumni?
So, yep, uh, in conversations with Mr. Brandigan, I believe he may have, uh, referenced this loosely with faculty prior to school letting out, um, and, you know, this pending your, uh, permission and approval will, will be sent out faculty-wide across all academic, uh, co-curricular, uh, sports, speech and theater workshops, student council, you name it, you know, uh, borough bot, whatever, uh, applications we take, you know, there, uh, certainly are a limited amount of funds, but would like to have a maximum type of impact, so instead of just allocating, uh, seventy-five hundred dollars to one cause, we wanted to open it up, um, and hopefully, you know, plug some holes, so that, for lack of a better expression, but, um, that, that would be the goal. I believe everyone has a copy of the, the letter that was sent to Mr. Brandigan. We're, we're calling it a, a request for proposal, and while the date says Friday, September thirteenth, because we'd like to review and be able to announce at our event, you know, here's where your money's going, everyone, thank you for coming. And, you know, last year's event, we had two hundred and thirty attendees, we raised, you know, uh, we, uh, it was something like eighty-five hundred, nine thousand dollars in, in that one event, it was a very successful event. We had sponsors, local businesses in the community, we had, uh, Bill Fuller and the bartending service, uh, managing the, uh, the concessions, and, um, we're Harper Lane Brewery, you know, they were there. Smutty Nose, we have a Middleborough alumni who works, uh, with Smutty Nose now, and trying to leverage every contact we have and hopefully continue to gain critical mass, so, you know, this year's of two, instead of two fifty this year, it's five hundred this year, and Baddis Field can certainly, you know, fit quite a bit of people, so.
Can I make a suggestion to you guys? Since this, um, this would really fit in nicely with the tourism committee is doing a lot for the three hundred and fiftieth anniversary in Middleborough, um, I think you would find that if you hooked up with the tourism committee, they would definitely promote your event, um, and, you know, in my, in my mind, it's one less thing you have to worry about and do, and it, they could promote it to a much wider audience, um, from what they have than just alumni, so that might be helpful for you guys.
We'd love to be put in touch with those folks.
Yeah. We can take care of that, that's not a problem.
That's great.
Any other questions? Mr. Rowe?
It just kind of struck me, um, when hearing you guys talk about the, the contacts that you had and how you were able to pull them together for that event, that, that would probably be a, an awesome outcome for the, the group as a whole, is here are all these different industries, and here are the Middleborough, Middleborough alums that work in them, so that someone that's graduating, you know, this year could say, oh, you know, I'm really into brewing and Smutty Nose, wow, that's a huge company, I wonder if they could help me get an internship or something like that.
For sure.
That sounds like it would be amazing.
Having some type of membership, and this is another thing where we're still, you know, talking about the best way to go about it, but you're almost creating a farm system, and if you have, uh, a, a list of folks on the website that are members of the Satchem Pride Alumni Foundation, again, this is something we're still kind of kicking around the office, but having that in writing on a website where, like, the exact example that you just gave is something that, uh, you know, we're talking about.
And just also to share, uh, Brandigan had also proposed or come to us with thoughts, you mentioned your, your experience at graduation, uh, and he talked about us potentially thinking about events and getting involved and that being an opportunity for us also to welcome them to the alumni as, as they sort of walk out, host some events afterwards, um, was it, was that sort of an idea thought about, but we definitely want to figure out some links to invite, you know, once you're an alum, right, really invite you to this community, and certainly being able to then advertise all the different things that we're doing, I guess that becomes the power, right?
It's incredible. And alum and friends of alum.
And friends.
Any other questions? I, I want to thank you guys, because I, I think this happens a lot in private schools, but one of the things about private schools that they get more than anything else is there's usually a director of development that sort of runs the alumni association, and then, you know, they're alumni members, but sort of hand it out. I really appreciate you guys stepping up and, and starting this, and so please tell the entire group that we thank them immensely, um, and I know many of us will be at the next event, so we really thank you, and, and please keep us in the loop of anything that you guys do, because we'll be more than happy to promote it and, and put it out there for you guys, and like we said...
Make sure it's sustained.
Yeah, absolutely.
This is an effort that you guys want to be ongoing and to keep moving and to keep that momentum or that mojo going, which I think is important, and I think, um, this is maybe the beginning of some exposure that you might get. Maybe a thought is a little table at Crazy Days? I don't know, there's a lot of Middleborough alumni walking around on those days, okay? I just some ideas that just getting a little bit of, of a buzz going in the community about, about your events and about everything you're about, which is great. Even when we spoke about these proposals, we want them to be things that are sustainable in the school, and not just maybe just that one-time thing, okay, once in a while, but buying things that should, students for generations might be able to use, or at least one or two generations.
And the other thing, too, is, uh, we've also talked a lot about, in our meetings, uh, with the building committee about sort of what we do at end of old school and beginning of new school, so we've also talked about the idea of like maybe doing a dance in the gym as, as the last event that the community come to, and the same with opening up, and so that, I think that would work perfectly. It, it doesn't necessarily have to, you know, we're looking for a group to do it. It, it makes a perfect sense for somebody like you guys to do it where it directly benefits, uh, the community and the schools, um, so I think those type of things, you know, would be fantastic as we move forward.
I actually received an email from a resident of the community specifically talking about the end of old school and from auctioning off locker items and stuff like that, when things are being removed, there could be items that could be, uh, could be salvaged and potentially auctioned off at one of these events, or raffled off at one of these events or stuff like that, so.
It certainly was on the agenda of one of recent meetings. We, we were talking about the fact that there was a, a alum that reached out that wanted to do a, a dance, if you will, a social, and, uh, looking at some models of some schools around that have done some different things and had nights where the class of seventy-eight met in this room, and the class of seventy-nine met in that room, and the class of two thousand five met in that room, sort of a mini reunion night, and there've been a number of different ways that things, uh, we have a little bit of time there, um, to plan those things, but it is, there, there have been some ideas that have been hatched around.
It'll be here before we know it.
Yeah, it will. You're right.
Mr. Rowe?
Sorry, one, one last thing, I forgot. I'm kind of itching already to tell people about this, cause I think it's such an awesome thing that you guys are doing. Um, is there a particular ask of the community? Do you need more people to email you and say, hey, how can I help? Or do you need people to donate, or do you need, uh, what, what would you guys need if I were to just post something about it?
Anything and everything.
Just contact you guys.
I think, uh, yeah, uh, people can feel free to reach out, ask how they can get involved. The, the, the more we grow, the more there will be a need for subcommittees, um, you know, uh, obviously funding is, you know, paramount, you know, getting people who have either gone through the high school or families that have, have put children through the high school and want to give back and then have the means to give back, this is the channel. Um, and, you know, the, the, the best way to, to do that, they can come out and, and attend the event and enjoy themselves and reconnect with old friends or meet new ones, um, so, you know, say all of the above.
Sounds good.
And I think for us, I think we will build confidence when we see people coming from outside of our networks, right? And I think that will enable us to start some of these platforms, which I think we really are all about, and I guess that would be the other ask of, of this committee, and is help thoughts, ideas. I really appreciate all that that's been shared in terms of how we can set up more programs to really touch students. We're, we're always all ears, so.
Again, thank you guys very, very much. We appreciate all your efforts so far and look forward to the future.
Thank you.
We, we brought a check for, uh, you know, a photo op, I don't, I don't know if...
Sure, we always like photo ops. We like the big check, that's one of my favorite things. Sean, big check time. Before these guys leave, uh, the chair would entertain a motion to accept, uh, the RFP for next call. Joy, here's a second.
Second.
Discussion. Again, thank you very much. This sort of shortens the, uh, you can, as far as I'm concerned, whenever you award it, you can hand out the funds and let people do it right away. We'll, we'll have already made that approval if everyone votes this way, um, so thank you again for all you're doing. Yes?
So I have a motion in a second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Would you, uh, Mr. Chair, entertain a motion that, uh, the Middleborough School Committee agreed to work with the Satchem Pride Alumni Foundation since they are five oh one C three?
Uh, ju, just to be, just to be clear, we don't have that as a policy yet.
Okay.
Because we are still waiting for, we're still working on it.
Athletic boosters.
But I would accept a motion to work with the Satchem Pride Alumni Foundation.
Absolutely, that's my motion.
And I, I have a second.
Second.
Uh, discussion, hearing none. Again, thank you for all your hard work, so we look forward to it.
Thank you.
And thanks, folks. Do, do you want to display that check at the high school? Do you want to...
Yeah, I mean, I would do that.
Yeah? You can display it to high school.
So I have a motion on the table in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Do you think we can bring that to the next selectmen's meeting to show it off a little bit?
Yeah, no, that's fine. I think that would be great, if you don't mind. We'll, we'll make sure it gets to the high school, but Brian brings it to the selectmen's meeting, and we can start a conversation there. The other thing, too, that I think might be helpful, too, is if you attend the selectmen's meeting, if you can, on Mondays, um, they run every other week for the summertime, uh, but again, we can send you the contact for their secretary, and they can put you on the agenda, because I think that would be good for the community. It's different sorts of views. We get a lot of views from parents, they get a lot of views from outside, regular community members, and again, I think the more the merrier for you guys. Um, and I also think that you'll find, um, for example, when you talk about the, um, job, there is a job hunting group in Middleborough right now for residents, so it would seem to me to be, that would be the perfect group to hook up with to have that discussion with students, because they already have some groundwork laid.
You may find, Mr. Chair, you might find that you may touch some classes of the, in the fifties and the sixties that watch that Monday night show every single Monday night, that they may now reach out because they knew something was going on, so, cause they saw it, so that's a great idea.
And one thing that I'll tell you that I saw that was pretty interesting, was I
folks who did retire from the district, many of whom spent their entire career here. And I don't want to feature one over the other because they're just all great people who spent a great deal of time here. So to all of those folks, congratulations. To the folks who resigned, perhaps for different reasons, we wish them well. And for the new hires, we wish them all the best. And hopefully, we have gone through a process where we're trying to identify those positions we have earlier on so that we get the best candidates and get the larger pool of candidates that we can, we can pick from. And we do have some very, very strong candidates coming in. So that's sort of my end of the year. I know Sarah has a couple of budgetary comments that she'd like to add also.
As the school year winds down, so does the fiscal year and we're, things are a little bit, I'm going to use the phrase higgledee-piggledee in my office right now with processing a lot of paperwork, but the end is in sight and things are looking good for us.
Great.
Yeah. And based on the fact that we can do our prepays if we, if we have money left over, if, it makes it so that our give backs are very small, I think. Will we have any give backs this year? It would be very tight, you think?
It's going to be tight, but I believe there will be give backs.
At least we give a little back.
Some back to revenue sharing, you know, rather than.
Asking. Thank you.
Any other? Rich?
You tell me if it's appropriate to ask now this question, but I was just curious if the signing bonus for Champions is something that we'll get now or later?
We have to work out contract details with Champions and once that's done, I think then we'll proceed from there.
Got it.
The contractor's in the attorney's hands. They've looked at it. Need to talk to the insurance company and a couple of other things before. We also, what has to happen is that the YMCA has to notify the state that they're no longer the childcare provider for Middleborough Public Schools and Champions cannot get a license until that occurs. So I know that there have been memos that have gone back and forth and we're working on that at this point to try to secure that sort of process that is complete before we move on. Once we move on, we'll certainly adhere to the vote that was taken by this committee that that money go to technology at the elementary level, be prorated by student population and be provided in that manner. So.
Excellent. All right. Thanks.
And the, you know, there was a clear understanding in the conversations that there would be no, while we put in the proposal that we'd like to see a summertime program and things like that, that wouldn't happen this year because of the way everything that would need to go down. And just going back to the licensure piece, Champions does have licenses throughout the state. It's just the way the Middleborough piece needs to work out. It's a process. And part of it is that the Department of Elementary and Early Education put it on their website so that if you go and a family looks for, before or after school activities, that's how they see it. The same way you would look for to make sure that you're, you were choosing a licensed daycare for your child. You would go on the website and make sure that everything was in place. So that's, there's a process you have to go through.
But Champions, the company, has been through the process before in places like Holbrook, Dayton-Rhoboth, Norton, Swansea, a number of other school departments that they work with closely that they provide the childcare services for. So. If there are no other questions, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Sorry, if I could just ask one follow-up and again, tell me if I should ask this at a different time, but I have seen some, some parents saying, when, when will be the first time that, you know, we can bring kids to this? Or when can we sign up or anything like that? I know they're still kind of going through the contract process, so those things probably aren't available. But is there any guidance we can give as to when they might expect to start hearing about it?
The principals are working with the regional rep to establish it one night for, for this. I think it's going to be at the complex, but they're working on dates right now.
Okay.
So, but before we do anything, we do need to sign contract and go forward with that. And I would guess that that would be signed through the chair. So.
Sounds good. Thank you.
My next note is administrative professional development. As you know, teachers, we provide a lot of opportunities for teachers within the district for professional development. And the administrator is usually present in that professional development because it's important that they know about the Leslie Initiative. It's important that they know about ST Math and it's important that they participate with them. The, the time that we have to work with administrators is in the summer. So, and after school during the year. And there's a couple of instances here where I, that I want to mention. First of all, the social emotional learning workshop. We provided an all-day workshop on Thursday, excuse me, Thursday, June 20th, the day after school got out. It was done by Rebus and Associates. The teacher, the professor's name was Carol Gregory, does a wonderful job. I've worked with her in the past in Bridgewater-Rainham. And I specifically requested her because she has a nice way with working with administrators. She provided a full day workshop in social emotional learning. Back in May, on May 23rd, we worked with the administrators in an introduction to it, doing some jigsaw puzzle articles, each, everybody reading a piece of the article and introducing it to a larger group, getting a real idea. The impetus being is that administrators need to have a common vocabulary about what we're talking about in terms of social emotional learning. There are a lot of different additions, a lot of different books out there and ways to go about it. But we want to get, get all the administrators on the same page as to what it is. So that when they're going into the classrooms, we have that universal application where if assistant principal or a principal goes into a school, into a classroom, they're looking for the same things with regard to if a student, if a relationship is being built or not built and all those things that are social emotional. So what will happen throughout the year is we will have our annual group of workshops, series of workshops with the administrators that's usually start from four and go to six or sometimes six-thirty. And Carol Gregory will come to the district. She'll be working with these administrators during the day, going into classrooms, sitting with the principals after, what did you see? What did you see? Going back, comparing notes, and then working with the group after school. So she'll be brought on sort of four, about four or five times this year, possibly, possibly five, scheduled four right now, to work with administrators on that. And also an opportunity that we sponsor every year in the district is an administrative workshop, which takes place in August. Those are August 6th and 7th. And I've already invited you folks to the luncheons, if you'd like, on either day. You're certainly welcome to. Generally, the last one, we have our first responders, we have our joint chiefs arrive to that luncheon. It's a great opportunity. School resource officers also attend. And that's the larger administrative group attends that second day. The first day is the smaller administrative group with principals and directors. And the second day is the larger group with assistant principals and spin facilitators and such. That's that second day. That's August 7th. Those are held in the Abigail Adams Room at the, at the Boston Tavern. Dennis is nice enough to provide that room for us. And we do basically have lunch with them or buy lunch from them, but they do provide us that room, which has been a nice place for about, I guess this is our fourth year going in. So it's been, it's wonderful. My first year, we did it at the Elks and it wasn't as professional as I'd like. And I think it's more comfortable when you have a group of people. There are towns around that go places and that do things for these administrative workshops. But I think it's better to have it in home. I usually sponsor, on the final day, I sponsor a sort of a little bit of a reception at my house afterwards for those folks that want to attend. Not required, obviously. But it is a great opportunity to get those administrators together and get on the same page for the remainder of the year. So that's sort of our administrative professional development plan for this coming year. I could certainly give you guys, few folks a schedule of those. You're welcome to attend any and all those workshops that we do to get an idea of what we're doing with the administrators. This year, we did a bunch of case studies. We did some nice work with that and it has worked out well. So it's been successful in my mind. And the feedback that we have from administrators has been positive. So just to give you an idea of what we're doing with administrators. So any questions you have on that the coming year?
Thank you.
Moving on, we have a new district-wide position that's proposed this evening. It's a registered behavior technician or RBT. You should have in hand or on computer a memo from Carolyn Lyons, PPS Director. And it describes the need for this. She has gone to the budget subcommittee on a number of occasions for this. And we have an opportunity within the preschool tuition account to basically put an ESP in there and have this person hired under that person's budgetary money, operational money. And it would mean an additional eight or $10,000 that we believe we can find in the budget to fund this K to 12 position, who would assist teachers, administrators, anyone in writing functional behavior assessments. I don't know if many of you work in school systems other than Middleborough. You might have these positions. There are a number of school systems that have a number of these positions. This happens to be one of them. Who work with our, we have a BCBA and this person would work with the BCBA. This person is not someone that requires a full college undergraduate degree. This is somebody who requires a specialty in RBT and would be working under the direction of the BCBA. But I would be looking to, to fund this position for this coming year.
Please.
One of the things that, when you read the memo, first I've always said, and I even said it this past week, when you have professionals that really understand what they're doing and they're expert at what they do and they make a suggestion to you and they strenuously make an suggestion, and then they even go and find most of the money for that suggestion, I always fight it hard to say no to someone who has gone to that extent and that extreme to, I mean, it's, and in, and in general, if you think of the position and what that position does, absolutely hands down, it's a necessity in our district. When you start talking about behavioral items and potentially reducing the, the office visits of, of behavioral pieces and understanding the why, I think that's kind of what we're looking at is that understanding of the why, which I think we all look for. This is.
That additional discreet and explicit instruction in behavior that's provided by an RBT is key here and is key. You know, we had a rising number of suspensions here at the Nichols Middle School this year. It was noted by me. And to me, it was excessive. And even at the high school, there were more suspensions this year. So the idea is to have somebody embedded in the school district to work with teachers, work with administrators on working to deter some of this, some of this heavy duty activity and discipline by coming up with plans beforehand with a recognition that there are students who, who may not be successful if not provided with some direction with regard to, which is explicit behavior techniques to use with them. So.
And Mr. Chair, I think that, and I think that our pupil and personnel director dovetailed it back to our, our, our program for growth in our district. And I always think about it. She didn't maybe point it out directly, but it directly goes to the wellness of our community, specifically of the wellness of our community, which we talk about in that growth piece. It's all part of it. And we have to make sure everyone's well, our students are well, to make sure that they can be educated.
With your permission, Mr. Chair, if I could read from, read from paragraph three of her memo, which states that the strategic plan, and I quote, "The strategic plan for continuous improvement defines the second strategic priority of the culture of well-being as follows." Quote, "Strengthen practices and procedures that promote access to ensure support for the social and emotional well-being of students, faculty and staff." Unquote. "By adding invaluable resources of an RBT, each school would have the opportunity to strengthen this practice for addressing behavior through accurate functional behavior assessments and detailed behavior intervention plans." Unquote.
I would also add to, excuse me, I would also add to the fact that if you've read anything recently, the state is taking a hard look at suspensions.
Absolutely.
At in-school, both in and out. And they're also taking a hard look at restraints and whether or not children are in restraints. And so, you know, this, I believe this position helps with that and addresses some of that.
And Mr. Chair, as you know, the restraint reports get to the school committee on a regular basis. That has not been excessive.
No.
But I find that the suspensions have been excessive in my mind, more than average, and it shouldn't be. So I think it's incumbent upon us to do all that we can and to sort of show the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that we are making efforts. If they do question some of our numbers in terms of discipline, that we are making our efforts, our due diligence to do everything we can to reduce those numbers. And this is a step in the right direction as far as I'm concerned.
And to be clear, even if this position was in place, there would still be suspensions. Because as we discussed, there were some issues that had come up, which clearly warranted the student being suspended. So I don't want people to think that this would have changed that. Not, not at all. There would still be some suspensions. Maggie, you had a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is this something that we're going to be able to sustain?
That's our hope. Yes. That's our plan.
Okay.
Mr. Oakley.
Correct me if I'm using the wrong acronyms, but I got a chance, thanks to the, the free time of Ms. Lyons, to explain to me how the system kind of works here. And it seems like it's a pretty good way of doing things where there are, for lack of better terms, just a ton of feelers on the ground all throughout the district, kind of finding those issues and feeding them up to a BCBA. Is that, is that right?
Correct.
It sounds like by adding this RBT position, that that would just strengthen that kind of eyes, eyes and ears everywhere and just adding more strategy or just more, more bandwidth to make that strategy. So that's, it sounds like an excellent addition, especially where you said, it sounds like the money has already kind of been found for it, which is great.
She does a great job. And I would also add that, you know, Caroline takes more steps than I've seen in other districts. For example, she has to meet with the superintendent and I regularly to have a conversation about where things are at to make sure that I understand pieces and can explain to the board if the board asks me questions or has questions. Also to know, as people may or may not know, I mean, special ed can be litigious, to know why we're spending money on certain things and what we're doing with those things. And so I have an idea of, we don't have conversations about particular students. We have conversations about what goes on and what issues have been brought up so we can, we can talk about it. And, you know, and I, my answer to Caroline is always the same, which is we hire you to do this. We have the utmost confidence in you. So I'm really, you know, I'm pleased with your decision-making. So thank you for, thank you for keeping us in the loop.
And her efforts are always characterized with, with it not to prevent out-of-district placements, but always to keep children in the least restrictive environment.
Right.
That to me is the positive here. Keep kids in the least restrictive environment. The least restrictive environment is in our schools. And then going out of our schools, there are therapeutic date placements and such things as Reed's Collaborative and Pilgrimage Collaborative and such. And then there are significant out-of-district placements, some that can't be avoided. This is trying to catch students at a younger age with some functional behavior assessments to try to figure out and hopefully solve issues at a younger age and at an older age too, also.
Yes.
I know it's a little early, but I'd move that we approve the RBT district-wide position that's presented.
Joy, a second.
Second.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next on the agenda is the out-of-state field trip to Montreal, Quebec, Middleborough High School Music Department. And I know that Mr. Pittsley is here, if you might have any questions. This is something that's done every other year. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Pittsley. But every other year, every year they go on a band trip. And every other year, every third year.
Every third year. I think it's every third.
Goes out of the country a little bit. Mr. Pittsley, welcome.
Thanks for having me.
So, Mr. Pittsley, every, the rotation, correct me if I'm wrong, is generally Canada, New York City, and then someplace else, usually United States, Washington.
Yeah, so the rotation that we're on right now, this past year, we went to Washington, DC. Next year, with your approval, we'll go to Montreal and Quebec City. Then we will go to New York City the year after that. And then the year after that, that's kind of the flex trip. I see where the interests are. So in that spot, in the last rotation, we went to Nashville. When we get to that rotation, my son will actually be in the high school, so that's a little frightening. But, so I have to hear where he wants to go, of course. So we're kind of in that rotation. We compete when we go to New York and DC. And then the off years, like Montreal and the other trip, we do clinics at major universities with their music staff. It gives our students invaluable time and feedback with someone other than me and our choral director. They hear the same exact things that we tell.
And then going out of our schools, there are therapeutic date placements and such things as Reed's Collaborative and Pilgrimage Collaborative and such. And then there are significant out-of-district placements, some that can't be avoided. This is trying to catch students at a younger age with some functional behavior assessments to try to figure out and hopefully solve issues at a younger age and at an older age too also.
Yes.
I know it's a little early, but I'd move that we approve the RBT district-wide position. Is that presented?
Dory, second. Second. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next on the agenda is the out-of-state field trip to Montreal, Quebec, Middleborough High School Music Department. And I know that Mr. Pittsley is here, if you might have any questions. This is something that's done every other year. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Pittsley. But every other year, every year they go on a band trip. And every other year, every third year.
Every third year. I think it's every third.
Goes out of the country a little bit. Mr. Pittsley, welcome.
Thanks for having me.
Thanks.
So, Mr. Pittsley, every, the rotation, correct me if I'm wrong, is generally Canada, New York City, and then someplace else, usually United States, Washington.
Yeah, so the rotation we're on right now, this past year, we went to Washington DC. Next year, with your approval, we'll go to Montreal and Quebec City. Then we will go to New York City the year after that. And then the year after that, that's kind of the flex trip. I see where the interests are. So in that spot, in the last rotation, we went to Nashville. When we get to that rotation, my son will actually be in the high school, so that's a little frightening. But, uh, so I have to hear where he wants to go, of course. So we're kind of in that rotation. We compete when we go to New York and DC. And then the off-years, like Montreal and the other trip, we do clinics at major universities with their music staff. That gives our students invaluable time and feedback with someone other than me and our choral director. They hear the same exact things that we tell them every single day, but when you hear it from somebody else, it makes a huge difference. So that's kind of the rotation we're in.
And the days are not just about music. It's sort of a rotation of, for example, museums and, and there is some fun involved. I mean, you know, the kids, I think the Washington, the, the, the program's held at an amusement park. So they get to, after they're, they're done performing, they get to hang out at the amusement park for the rest of the.
Yeah, we spend, you know, we could do field trips where, and we used to do this, we used to go to Six Flags and do their thing there. And we compete and then you go to the park afterwards. I really liked that trip for other types of groups, but our kids don't get out of here enough. And they, so I build these trips with education in mind every second. One, we need to keep them busy because we need them to be tired at bedtime. But two, like the amount of things they learned in DC this past year, we, before we left, we talked about Wayne Karen and explained who he was and why he's important to our town. And then we, in DC, visited his gravesite at Arlington. We saw his star on the Wall of Honor at the Marine Corps Museum. We found his name on the Vietnam Wall. And, and to see the students kind of connect there, it's so valuable, you know, and the things that they, the conversations they have, I hear from, oh, we just talked about that in history. Or we were in the, the Science Museum, something they just talked about and they went and found an exhibit on it. So we really try to make sure that the trips are really kind of enhancing what they're learning, not just in music, but across the board. And I think if you talk to any of these kids, many of you have kids that have been on these trips, they'll tell you that's exactly what we do. So.
Daughters love the trips.
The thing we love about Montreal, it's like going to Europe without going to Europe. So it's a lot less expensive, but when you go to Quebec City, it's like being in Europe. And that experience for them is something totally different than what you get here. So.
And everybody, like, I wouldn't say this, the thing I'm always impressed at too is even, there's also little things involved. I mean, all the, for example, when you go to the Montreal trip, which my child has done, you find out pretty quickly that there's a different rate for telephone service in, at Canada. So all you have to do as a parent is just go down to Verizon and sign, essentially call and sign up to make sure that they're put on the plan immediately. So you're saving yourself money. It's, you know, sort of these little tidbit things that they go over time and time again, that I think is really, you know, and shows the intricacies of what happens with these trips. So.
Right now, with the, the immigration piece is complicated. So last time we went, we're allowed to travel with passports, with birth certificates and a letter stating where we're going, traveling with students. That was a real hassle at the border last time. So the plan would be this time, we're doing passports across the board, just to, to make it easier. So.
Through you, Mr. Chair. The folks at home might wonder what, how this, how supervision works on a trip like this. With the chaperones and, what's the ratio of chaperones to, to students and such?
So our goal is always one chaperone for every 10 students. Sometimes we get better than that. Sometimes it's like one to 12, but really one to 10 is what we go for.
Parents, faculty?
Yeah, so we mostly take, we take as many staff members as we can first. Our buddy Sean in the back room comes with us, take all our photos. But I think we had, one, two, three, four, five, six staff members when we went to DC, from, throughout the district. And then we fill in the gaps with other parents. Typically, we try to go by seniority. So if it's their last time around, we try to give them the chance to go. So that's, and then the supervision, those, those staff members are with their students to check in. They're the go-to person for any issues that arise. Overnight, myself and the choral director always take the night shift so the chaperones can sleep and take care of the kids during the day. But really the benefit of what the company we travel with is they provide a tour manager. She travels, he or she travels with us from the, the minute we get on the bus at Middleborough High till the minute we get back. They take care of every detail. So when you get to the restaurant, like, we don't have your reservation for 100 kids. I would be in a total panic. Our tour manager fixes that problem. And so our only job is the kids, making sure they're safe first and having fun second.
Still Scotch-taped doors, Mr. Pittsley? Oh, sorry.
Yes, we do, we do have our procedures. So.
Yes. A couple of items on that, when you, when you say students will be getting, will be required to get a passport, which I think is great. So students will graduate either with a five or a 10-year passport, depending on their age. Because I think under 18, they're only good for five, but it's a less expensive passport. But I think it's great because at that point, when they're in college, if they get an opportunity, that's one less thing they have to worry about if they get that opportunity to travel. So I think it's a great, great piece. The other item is, is when we were, back in September of 2016, we were sitting at the Boston Tavern, we were talking about how classes should be interacting, how nothing's done in a microcosm, how English and biology should be working together, how music or the arts should be working with everyone. Now it's STEM and STEAM. And what you were talking about, about the trip to Washington DC, I know firsthand what was going on. Because I got a firsthand discussion of everything they did with pictures, which was awesome. But I, I have to say that you're talking exactly what we were looking at, where all of our educational pieces fit together as, as we look forward to this new school. But you've been doing this for a while, I know you have, because I know you look at that. And I do appreciate that's, it's not just a trip away. Because it's four days, three days out of, out of class. So for three days out of class, and they're not just going on vacation, they are actually learning, which I thought was, on all the trips, my son's done three of them, all of them. He's come back with amazing things that now I want to go and learn some more. So I thank you for these trips.
Yeah, in regards to the passport issue, we're cognizant of the cost issue with that that adds on to this. But because we're on land travel, they have the passport card, which is a lot cheaper. So we're, we'll be in more communication. We haven't done much because we were waiting to do this first. And then the, the learning piece, I can't justify taking a trip out and not having that in it. And it's not really beneficial for them to do that. And so we want to build as much of that in as we can.
I, I also want to thank you, Mr. Pittsley, because as you know, my child was one of them. There are kids who can't take band just because of classes. But you've always opened it up to let them be a part of band. They have to do some extra work and make sure that they're ready to perform for you. But also, not only are they showing up at the football games and concerts, but they can also attend the trip because they're doing the things they need to do. So even if your child can't take band, there are still opportunities for them to be a part of this trip and to be a part of the band. And that's always been a great thing. So thank you.
Music is a lifelong education.
Absolutely, members. So if no one objects, this is an out-of-state trip that does require our approval?
Motion to approve the Montreal, Quebec City field trip.
Discussion. Hearing none. Again, thank you for all you do, Mr. Pittsley. We appreciate it. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And as also noted on the agenda, the, well, it's the Consequoir will be at the crazy day, so. There's another piece of music at crazy day, so that really requires a consent agenda, so, but I did want to point that out while you were here. Thank you.
Great. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
Thanks, Justin. Thanks for coming down.
Thanks for what you do. See ya, Justin. Thank you. Here's my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Under MSBA, and we really haven't had a meeting other than the building's still being built. So that's very exciting.
Take a look at the video.
Yeah, I know.
The webcam.
Yeah.
So any questions about MSBA at all?
Mr. Chair, if I could.
Sure.
I did attend the owner's architect contractor meeting today, the OAC meeting in the tent. The binder for the road that comes in from Wood Street was put down today. The bus loop behind the future school was put down as a binder today. Part of the teacher parking lot, student parking lot was put down today as a binder. And the light poles are up at the new stadium. And if you look online, you'd be able to see those. And if you go to the Middleborough Public Schools website and go to community and just scroll down and you'll see the, the live cams, you can click on those and there are two of them. There's one on top, which is the actual foundation, and there's one in the fields. I did take a tour of the site today with the OPM and was very impressed with the work that was going on. There was a lot of concrete being poured into forms today in, for the auditorium wall. And the gym wall has been done. And again, they're putting the AstroTurf base down. I know at our, at our building meeting, we had talked about with David Warner from the Warner Architects about the turf. And we had talked about the special Boston University study that had been done on the piece that needs to be done between. And we did find a contractor that would put in that G-Tech. And that is what we had talked about being the optimum. And Boston University had determined that to be the optimum piece, the barrier in between the stone and the turf. So we, that was confirmed today at that meeting, that was G-Tech.
Yes.
To be specific, it has a slower bounce back when, when something hits it, like a head hits it. It doesn't push back immediately. So it would more like an indent with a slow. So they've said that the concussion piece was because if your head hit it, it would push back so fast that that caused that jarring concussion piece. Whereas this, it would more go in and, and almost catch it and then it would slowly push back. Which I thought that was one of the best things. It was a little more expensive, a little bit thicker, but well worth the money.
But Fontaine Brothers sought a contractor that had that.
That's awesome.
And that was part of their specs, which is great. So.
And that also applies to, I mean, one of the things that people think about is you think about that turf being used by a lot of programs with helmets. And it's also used by a lot of programs without helmets, like soccer and things like that. And I, I would maintain over a period in time, if you look at, if you look at actual numbers, I think it always plays out that concussion-wise, it's always, football always has the highest number of concussions. But the interesting piece about that is, in most football games, even at a, a lower level, they're required to have paramedics on duty. So paramedics are making the assessment that a kid has a concussion. In, for example, soccer, we only have somebody on duty at the high school level. For, for the younger kids and everything like that, there's no one, we're not required to have people on duty except if we run a, if you run a, essentially a tournament, there's usually people on duty. So it's not the same level of monitoring. So that's one of the things we looked at with the pad to make sure that. It's, to be honest with you, it's a newer study that had just come out. And so it was, you know, cutting edge. And again, if we have the opportunity, we're going to make those, we're going to make the place as safe as we possibly can for kids. And anyone who tells us what we can do to make it safer, we're going to do that.
And Mr. Chair, what I also brought up today in my, I had the occasion again to meet the OAC meeting, was to talk about the fact that, that you and I, Mr. Chair, had talked to a local landscape contractor about the fact that he was a little bit frustrated that he wasn't able to sign on with Fontaine Brothers. Fontaine Brothers is what's called signatory with unions. So the company that would be brought on would be a union company. However, Dave Fontaine Jr. did assure us that when it came time to purchasing trees and bushes, that they would, they would contact local nurseries and go in, and which they have done. I know they have done, now gone to Spillane's Nursery. And they have tagged a number, a number, a good number of trees and bushes that are locally grown and that will be installed at the high school. So to that end, that's a good thing. And so we'll move forward. But those are my two specific questions at today's meeting. And I was assured that both were, were the way that our committee wanted them to go.
And just to remind people, before I forget, I just want to say that we had, we had spent more money taking out more trees along the lines of the trailer that manufactured home is area, primarily because a lot of those trees had problems with the root system. And so what we had decided at our last meeting was to begin putting in trees and shrubbery sooner than later, especially along that side, to make sure that by the time that the, the building opened, you know, it was gonna, we were, we were purchasing older trees and older shrubbery so that the sightlines diminish for both us and them. So. Greg, you had a question?
Mr. Chair, just a comment to the public really. I get to go visit for the first time, you know, my three-year-old loves construction vehicles, so I brought him down there for 30 minutes to watch him run around. And I hadn't been there since the groundbreaking. And now you can really see it. Like, if you go down there, you can envision where the field will be, where the school will be, where the parking lot will be. It's not just trucks pushing around dirt or cutting down trees. You can actually see where this new school's going to be. And it's really a cool feeling to see, oh, that's what it's going to be like. That's what the pictures are starting to materialize. And it's really neat feeling to go down there and see that.
Very exciting.
Video, it almost looks smaller than it really is.
Yeah, yeah.
It's pretty wide.
And the other, we, I, I meant, excuse me, Mr. Chair, that the fact that the light poles went up was, was sort of a vertical presence, the first real vertical presence. The second one is the, the shaft on the elevator number two is going up. And that's being built now. And that'll be three, four, that turret will be three, four, three floors high. And then they'll go over to the wing where the auditorium and the gym are, and they'll put up the second one. So, so, yeah.
You can see the curvature of the auditorium already. And you can see the curvature of the, the, the roundness of that rotunda in the foundation, the fittings.
And the steel is on its way.
There you go. Any other questions about MSBA or any of the comments? Hearing none, I'll move on to the consent agenda. Dory, a second.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Superintendent's evaluation will be done next meeting. I, I too am at, at end of my fiscal year. So things have been, trying to finish up. So I'll have that at next meeting. The other piece I wanted to talk about briefly was that, we discussed last time, the summer meetings, July 25th and August 22nd. Since we're all here, I would just want to make sure that that made sense for people. And we were going to see if anyone wanted, we had in the past done things a little earlier. Does that work for people? Does that not work for people? Do you just want to start at seven? Mr. Oakley.
Were we talking about starting?
In the past, to be honest, in the past, we started at six. And I believe last year, we started at 6:30. So anything like that. So I just throw that out if people want to start a little earlier to see what the feeling of the board is. Mr. Rupp.
I'll actually be back in, so I do not know. For the 25th, I will not be able to attend. I'm away in Europe. But for the 22nd, I won't be able to make it until about 7 o'clock.
Okay. You want to just do the seven and just keep it at seven for the time being? Okay, that's fine. No problem. Then we'll post it that way.
Where I'm working right now, till 5 o'clock, I'm in Braintree on a Thursday. I ran into Cape traffic today. I was like, oh my God.
Well, it is the, the weekend before 4th of July though. So you get a lot of people leaving this today, having this discretion with Mr. Stevens prior to. Good luck, my friend. MSC, okay, the MSC Summer Institute, I just checked again, is actually the 13th and the 14th. I just got an email the other day from them. So if people are interested in going, let me know. That's in Marlborough. You might have just got an email if you, if you check. And then the MAS and MASC joint conferences, November 6th and 10th. There is a, if you purchase before July 15th, there's a, again, there's a, you get to go cheaper than if you purchase later. The superintendent and I are going, and if people are interested in going. The other thing I would say to you too is, if you can even go for just one day or something like that, just let me know and, and work it out. It's very interesting and I think you'll like it. But let me know. We have nothing right now for policy updates. Still, I'm actually working on the foster care amendment. I had a conversation with another school committee that may be submitting it too. So we had a brief conversation about, about sort of what we were looking at. So it wouldn't necessarily have to be both of us submitting it. So I may be back to you on that one at the next meeting. For action items, we took care of both action items. Did anything, anyone have anything else? I know we talked about retirements. We get a donation from Bay State Textiles, like we usually do, and they continue to support us. Any other questions before I make a motion for executive session? Chair wants to entertain a motion for executive session for procedure number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may be detrimental to the effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair so declares, I so declare.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we only go, come out for the sole purposes of adjournment.
Dory, a second.
Second.
Requires a roll call vote. Mr. Oakley? Mr. Rupp? Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
Mr. Jimononi?
Aye.
Jeanette? And the chair votes aye, and we will not come back into regular session. Thank you.